Okay. Okay, so Dr. Valastracy. Yep, participants, attendees are beginning to come in. And once Mr. Mitchell steps out of the room, I'll take my mask off for the beginning portion of the meeting. For those of you who are coming in, we're just waiting for a few minutes while the attendees populate. We have about 50 attendees at this time, but the number is still moving. So we want to give it just another second as people settle into the meeting.
All right, I, I, oh, sorry. Are we ready? All right. Welcome. This is the Guilford, Connecticut Board of Education. It is Monday, January 25th, 2021. Tonight, we are holding a public forum on the proposed budget put forth by the Guilford Public Schools Administration. This will be the first of two public forums. The second will be held tomorrow night, Tuesday, January 26th, at 7:30 as well. So welcome to this budget forum. Dr. Freeman brought to the Board of Education on January 11th, a proposed budget for academic year 2021, 2022. This budget is also displayed on the Guilford Public Schools website for reference. Tonight, we welcome your, your comments on this budget. We are going to proceed in the following way, in the hopes of making sure that everyone who is interested in addressing the board has an opportunity to do so. If you are interested, we ask that you enter your name and address at the Q and A box, which I believe should be at the bottom of your screen. We will be receiving comments from Guilford residents, as this is a Guilford Board of Education budget. I am going to ask that you limit yourself when speaking to four minutes. I will try not to be a timekeeper, but we really want to make sure that everyone who has an interest in doing so has an opportunity and time to address the board. So if it appears that someone is going significantly over that four-minute limit, I am going to ask them to wrap it up. We are very interested in hearing everything people have to say, but again, we really need to make sure everyone has an opportunity. This is again, an opportunity for you to make comments. If you have a clarification question, it's likely we may be able to quickly answer it. Otherwise, please note that we're going to be recording all questions that people have. This is a process of deliberation for us for at least a week, if not longer. The Board of Ed meets again next Monday, February 1st. And so any questions that come up tonight will be questions that we can discuss at that time. Before we get started, I do want to turn it over to Dr. Freeman for a few moments, because Dr. Freeman, I would like to ask you if you wouldn't mind to provide some clarification on some topics that certainly we as a board have heard something about over the last couple of weeks. I know we've heard quite a few comments about the proposal for the reduction of a equivalent, a full-time equivalent music teacher at Adams. And if you could provide some clarification, because I think there are lots of questions about that. Likewise, about the proposal for art teachers at the elementary school that would then indicate a decline in some world language staffing. You may have a couple of other things you want to clarify as well. So I'm going to turn it over to you, just to give people, again, on, at this meeting, an understanding of, of what those things are about.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Dr. Valastracy, and I will make every effort to keep this brief. I know that this evening is for the community. I do want to note that I have really appreciated the level of involvement that, that the board and I have seen over these last few days. I've received a number of emails that have asked questions, suggested, you know, expressed support and raised questions about some of what is in our budget. So I would like to touch on just a few of them. And you named two of, of the most frequently commented items. I do want to start by, by naming the math teacher. I did receive some questions about a math position. There is a suggested reduction in this budget for one math position at Adams Middle School. I do want to note that that is a direct response to enrollment declines that we have been experiencing at Adams. I'll talk to those a little bit more in depth in just a few minutes. But currently at Adams, there are six teachers in each of the subject areas of Language Arts and Science and Social Studies. There are seven teachers in the area of mathematics. That increase was put in place some years ago when we were transitioning to the Common Core state standards. We had altered our, our trajectory through math instruction for students at, at Adams and at the high school. That alteration changed some of the class options at Adams. And by changing that position, we were able to accommodate some students who were even taking two maths. Additionally, with the change in shifting to the core standards, the, the middle school students at that time were shifting directly into the new standards and expectations without having benefited from elementary experiences that were also aligned with those new standards and expectations. So we felt that specifically in the area of mathematics, that extra staffing was, was appropriate. With the declining enrollment, now that we've moved through that transition and now that students are exposed to those new standards and all through their elementary experience, we believe that that's an appropriate enrollment response. Math class sizes and mathematics will go up slightly, but they will go up to exactly the same class sizes as Social Studies and English Language Arts and, and Science at Adams. Additionally, I think the single item in this budget that I've received the most comment about has been around the music position. Similarly, there is a suggestion in this budget of the reduction of one music position in response to the enrollment declines district-wide, but specifically at Adams Middle School. First, I want to respond, this is not a programmatic change. This is simply a response to enrollment. This change will not limit the offerings that we provide at Adams. We will continue to provide choral experiences, orchestral experiences, orchestral experiences and band experiences, just as we have for the past several years at Adams. Students will continue to have the same contact time in those experiences, and they will continue to have ensemble experiences. This is very much in response to the enrollments, as I've spoken about them. And I want to take a moment here, because I do think it's important just to touch on that enrollment at a few different levels. From a district level, I think it's important to remind the community that two years ago, in 2018, we added two music positions at the district level. And those additions were not at Adams, they were at the elementary level. But we added two new teaching positions, specifically in music instruction, in 2018. At a district level, since 2018, enrollment has declined by slightly over 400 students. Even after making this correction, we will still be one teacher up. We will have increased by one teacher over that same period of time at a district level, where we have decreased by, by over 400 students. More importantly, it's, it's Adams specifically. The, the current staffing at Adams in the area of music has been in place since at least 2009. At that time, the enrollment at Adams was 619 students. Our projected enrollment next year for Adams is going to be 459 students. That's a decline of 160 students. That's a decline over that period of 35% of the student population. In that time, there have been other enrollment adjustments at Adams. In that time period, we have reduced a world language position. We have reduced a part-time PE position. Last year, we made a significant reduction in English Language Arts staffing, reducing six positions in English Language Arts. This budget includes the proposed reduction in math that I have spoken about. In none of those cases were those programmatic changes. We continued to offer the same programming to students. We were responding to the declining enrollment that we have seen. This music adjustment would be the same. We would be responding to the declining enrollment. We will not be limiting or eliminating programmatic offerings in the music area. I think it's also important, I've mentioned enrollment from a district level, from the Adams level. I also want to just contrast the, the music staffing at Adams as compared to the other special offerings at Adams. Again, we're currently at 3.4 FTEs, full-time equivalents in music at Adams today. This proposal would bring that staffing down to 2.4 FTEs, full-time equivalents in music staffing at Adams. Currently, PE at Adams is staffed at two, art at Adams is staffed at two, and technology instruction at Adams is staffed at two. So it would be responsive at a district level, it would be responsive at a building level. It would be responsive if you look at art in comparison to the other specials, sorry, music in comparison to the other specials. But additionally, if you look at music staffing as compared to other buildings in the district, the, the 3.4 positions at Adams over the last several years, not this year, this year is an exception, but over the last several years, those 3.4 positions have been servicing approximately 300 students. At the high school, we've got 2.4 teaching positions that are servicing approximately 500 students a year. And at Baldwin, we've got 2.3 positions that are servicing approximately 450 students a year. Again, I, I have really enjoyed reading the communications this week and hearing the enthusiasm and the value and the passion for music instruction. I can't say strongly enough that we share that enthusiasm, that value and that passion. We will not be changing the music program that we are offering. I also just need to note, however, that, that the budget is a financial budget, as right, as a financial document as well as an educational document. We are always looking to be sure that we are being efficient and responsible with the resources that this community entrusts to us. And so that this, this adjustment, like the math adjustment, like the reduction of two elementary classroom positions built into this budget, it is a response to the fact that over the last several years, we've been watching enrollment decline. I also want to note, I've just ticked off a number of positions that are changing due to responses to enrollment. Overall, the teacher staffing in this budget is only reducing by approximately one position, because while we are adjusting classroom staffing in areas like kindergarten and math and muse, sorry, elementary level and math and music, we're also looking to other emerging needs, like the increased need for more school social workers, like, like other increasing needs. And so it's, it's about looking at resources and allocating them to the places where we need them the most while protecting the programs that we offer. So I know that we're going to hear from people tonight who will talk about the excellent music program that we have, and I will agree with every single one of them. And, and we never enjoy needing to make teacher reductions in a budget, but we do it as a necessary component to providing a responsible budget that meets the needs of all students and maintains the very high quality that we've come to be familiar with here in Guilford. The only other one that I would mention briefly, Dr. Valastracy, would be there were questions around the allocations for staffing for elementary art and elementary world language. This budget is proposing an increase in art staffing at the elementary levels, roughly going from two full-time art teachers to four full-time art teachers, and a reduction in world language staffing at the elementary level, going from four full-time world language teachers to two full-time world language teachers. That will be a shift in, in, in the exposure, the contact time that students have in those two, those two disciplines. We will see students at the elementary level next year with an increased exposure in the area of visual arts. And we're not eliminating world language. Students will have a decreased exposure to world language in the elementary level, but we will continue to have world language exposure at the elementary level. So while that is a reduction in service, I, I also want the community to be clear that across the long range, we expect to be able to make up any loss in future years. To be more specific, as we have looked at world language instruction over the last several years, and many of the board members will remember that we've talked about this over the last several years, we know that we have transitions that can be more efficient. We have heard that students moving from the elementary into Baldwin do some repeat of world language exposure. When they go from Baldwin to Adams, there can be some of that same experience. We are confident that by looking at the vertical articulation of this experience from first grade through 12th grade, that we can accomplish this shift in, in ratio at the elementary level and not lose opportunity for students or mastery for students by the time they finish their world language experience as 10th or 11th or 12th graders at Guilford High School. And so we've talked for three years now about the difficulty of adding more art to our, to our experience, where we have a, a finite school day. Every year, when we present the budget, we talk to you about the idea of trying to creatively use our resources. We believe that this is an opportunity to increase contact for our youngest students in the area of, of art and maintain the, the long-range arc that we have, the exposure that we have for world language by looking at a curricular solution and by looking at vertical articulation. Again, it is never difficult, it is never easy. It is always difficult to make a decision where we're giving up ground in any area. But we believe that for a number of reasons, that this is a, a logical and a, a good decision moving forward. And with that, with that, Dr. Valastracy, I did want to get those clarifications out tonight. And I'm very much looking forward to hearing the commentary from the community members who are joining us this evening.
Wonderful, thank you so much. The last comment I will make before we go to the first person identified in the Q and A is just to simply acknowledge that we have received a number of emails over the last week from community members, parents and students regarding just different aspects of the budget. To those that came directly to me, a, a number I know of the, but of the comments or emails around music were directed to me. I am responding and getting those out to my colleagues on the board, so everyone sees them. I, I, I have been receiving some emails today. I have not done that yet because I, I was at work, but please know that if you emailed, those emails are being forwarded to the entire board, so that everyone on the board can read your comments. So I am going to invite the first person in our Q and A to the meeting. We ask when you get invited in that you turn on your camera, so that we can see you and are able to then hear your question. Hi, it looks like Leslie Powell is our, is our first participant. Hi, Leslie, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I, first of all, I want to say thank you for taking the time to listen to our views regarding the elimination of a music teacher from Adams. That's what I'm here to talk about. I appreciate everything I've just heard. But I think it's important to say that we cannot actually discuss this without acknowledging the broader context of this moment. We're nearly one full year into the pandemic. All aspects of education have been affected, but the performing arts, not general music, but the performing arts have been among the most negatively affected in terms of both the curricular and the co-curricular activities. By the start of the next school year in September, children in our district from fifth through 12th grades who are, or who would have been involved in the performing arts, will have gone a whole year and a half without regular frequent opportunities for instruction, rehearsal, ensemble work and performance. And anyone who's familiar with the performing arts knows that it's all about practice, 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 and the sheer amount of time that you put into it, and from as young an age as possible. So I have a short list of all of the different opportunities that have been lost in this year and a half. Everybody's familiar with them probably. Baldwin fifth graders have not learned to play any instruments this year. There is no select orchestra at Baldwin. There is no honor band at Adams. There is no concordia at Adams. The wind ensemble and the symphony orchestra don't play together at the high school. There is no marching band at Adams or at the high school. There is no sports band at the high school. There is no musical theater at the high school. There is no pit orchestra. There are no spring break music trips. There was no Strings Festival last year or this year. There were no concerts, there were no recitals. There were no CMEA regional ensembles. There won't be any state ensembles. I mean, the list goes on and on. This is just a smattering of things that I, I know about. I don't even know about the, the choral or the jazz missed opportunities. Becoming skilled in the performing arts requires a high frequency of playing. These unfortunately necessary eliminations of all the curricular and co-curricular opportunities that I've just listed means that kids from fifth to 12th grades have had dramatically reduced opportunity for ensemble work rehearsals, practicing performances, and this directly affects their skills, not to mention their enthusiasm. With the end of the pandemic in sight and the potential return of the performing arts in the next school year, it seems that now is not the time to be stretching resources thin and cutting back. Now is the time to be doubling down and reinvesting. The question is, how do we increase the opportunities and the skills of the kids in order to make up for a devastating year and a half of lost time? So I respectfully ask how eliminating a music teacher will possibly springboard our children forward in a way that, at a bare minimum, brings skills and opportunity levels just back to what they were before? And I hope that the bare minimum is not our goal. I implore the district and the board to find some other way to reach the budget goals that you have to reach. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Waiting for next participant.
We have Valerie Ferrucci coming in, Dr. Val.
Wonderful, hi Valerie, how are you?
Hi, sorry about that. Um, hello, my name is Valerie Ferrucci. I'd like to speak in full support of the proposed budget. I believe that Dr. Freeman has presented a budget that represents the financial crisis that we are in, while still maintaining a high level of standards that we're accustomed to in our town. I do believe that all the investments are worthwhile. And thinking on these investments and modifications that I valued the most, equity came to mind, as well as listening to both the community and the nation. The residency program and family equity liaison, I believe, are well thought out and will serve our town well. In providing two full-time art teachers in the elementary schools, as well as funds to the swim team, you've listened to the community, and I appreciate that. I've been impressed with the district's changes with incorporating more cultural education into the curriculum. And I believe more art contact time will further this. Regarding Dr. Freeman's clarifications, which, which I truly appreciate, I just wanted to piggyback on that with, just for those who don't know what our elementary school students receive, and please correct me if I'm wrong. This is, of course, pre-COVID facts, but so pre-COVID, they receive for first, Spanish in particular, only the first through fourth grade students receive. And they get that three times a week for a total of one and a half hours. Art has been once a week for 30 to 40 minutes, depending on grade. PE and music both have met twice a week for one hour each. So I just wanted to provide that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see Karen Moriarty, who will be joining us next, Dr. Valastracy.
Hi Karen, I think if you unmute and turn on your video. Wonderful, there we go.
Hi, I'm Karen Moriarty. I am in support tonight for the Guilford Swim Team.
Me too.
Along with Haley, who is a senior and was co-captain this year. We're just really in support of advocating for an assistant coach for our team. Haley's been on the team since the very beginning as a freshman and has seen the team grow exponentially over the last couple of years. And coaching has become difficult for all of the interests that is, has been for the swim team. And we do have a, a head coach, but an assistant coach would really help in, you know, dividing up swimmers who are more advanced than others and kind of getting the whole team together with different coaching styles. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, um, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've already done for our team, because you're one of the reasons that we've started in the first place, and that's been such an incredible opportunity. Like I said, I've been on the team since its first year, when we were winning no meets and we were losing by like a surplus of points. So we actually finished this past year as division champions, which was incredible. And I just think, looking at the growth from where we started and going to be division champions in just four years, just shows how much we've already done already. And if we were to have a assistant coach with us, who is paid in full, could greatly benefit not only the amount of people that are getting the attention that they deserve to get better and the opportunity, but also along with helping with some of the financial capabilities for people who want to join the team but have struggled, especially in times of COVID. It would genuinely just help us to become a better team, more together as a whole. And I just wanted to end by saying that if we can do what we did last year with the amount of coaching that we got, there could be, I don't know, imagine what we could do if we had a paid assistant coach. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Dr. Valastracy, we are inviting Nicole Slagcheck into the meeting.
Okay. Hi Nicole.
Hi, oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
It disconnected a moment. So thank you, and I know that Leslie has always, already spoken, and I know that all of you thoughtfully consider all of our options as you make budget decisions. But again, as a year that's been extremely challenging, there are many music students who want their voices to be heard. As we all hear across study after study, the benefits of music, music education and its positive influences on brain development lead to stronger academic performance and higher test scores in all areas. And cuts at any level will affect students both above and below, in, across all levels. As well, I think in the times that we're at, music brings people together. In times when our children need to appreciate how to address societal injustice and how to develop a deeper appreciation for diversity, enrichment is mandatory. Music is an avenue to leverage. The knowledge, the experience and the perspectives of our related arts teachers are the voices that they and we all need to hear. Times are stressful and expectations remain high, although the world for our children and what they knew is completely different. For many, it's the arts that enable them to cope. So you speak of social workers, but many of them find their avenues of coping through the other teachers that work with them every day. We need to expose our youngest learners to the arts, to music, to instruments and to the outlets that will enable them to be successful and give them the abilities to adapt in this ever-changing world. The petition, the students created a petition that has more than 1,800 signatures. And when you listen to their convictions and what they share, they talk about music has been my main outlet. Music teachers at Adams pushed me to my fullest potential. Music shaped me into the person that I am today. All of the music programs have been a crucial part of my education, and music has been a vital lifeline. They describe music as transformative, essential, enriching and crucial to their well-being. We ask that you close your eyes for a moment and remember that all of the beautiful music that used to resonate through our school concert halls. Those sweet sounds took effort, commitment and hard work. And your commitment to our district is to our students. And you are doing the hard work to find that budget that will work in those unprecedented times. We thank you for your efforts, but we do urge you to reconsider, to look harder and to find another place in this budget where $50,000 can be saved. Please let that not be anywhere in the programs that most significantly impact our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Audrey Barr that we are inviting in.
Hey. Hello, thank you.
Hi Audrey.
Hi. I'm one of the P T O co-presidents at Calvin Lee Elementary School, and I'm speaking on behalf this evening of 58 of our families. We wish to extend our strong support of Principal Slowly's request to increase art at Calvin Lee to full-time and Dr. Freeman's proposal to increase art in all the elementary schools in Guilford. Presently, we are sharing, as the other elementary schools are, you know, our our teacher, Ms. Teresa Donnarumo, which only affords the kids 30 minutes of art a week, which is just clearly not enough. As numerous studies have illustrated, art not only increases children's cognitive capabilities in their core studies, it also enhances their social and emotional expression and growth. We believe that if given a full-time art teacher, she would be able to commit the time in the service of our children and offer a more consistent instructional class time. A full-time teacher would also allow for greater collaboration with classroom teachers, the school counselor, and other specials and support staff. If Mrs. Donnarumo was given the opportunity to fulfill that full-time position, she would be able to devote more time to individual students and small groups of students who benefit the most from the socially and emotional therapeutic aspects of art. Art has always been believed to be therapeutic for people, children in particular, and for those struggling with psychological, emotional, and social struggles. Even greater, so art opens the heart and mind to possibilities and fuels kids' imagination during this unique time and for subsequent years. We believe that this would be a particularly important time to make art a priority, and we greatly appreciate Superintendent Freeman's recognition of this immediate need and thank him for, thank you, for prioritizing it in your budget proposal for the 2021-2022 school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are inviting Marisol Beres into the meeting.
Hi, Marisol, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. So last week, I sent a letter to the Board of Education regarding changes to the word language elementary program, and I would like to read it now. So, to whom it may concern, I'm writing to you in response to items covered on the January 11th, 2021 Board of Education meeting specifically regarding the changes to the word language program at the elementary level. The proposed changes could reduce students' weekly exposure to word language from 90 minutes down to 30 minutes, while increasing their exposure to art from 30 minutes up to 60 minutes. From the meeting, it was clear that increasing a student's art exposure is not possible without requiring a reduction in another area, an increase to the length of the elementary school day, and/or allocating extra time investment for staffing due to the shortage of certified word language teachers at the elementary level. I have been a part of the word language program for over 10 years and witnessed how the curriculum has developed. The curriculum is primarily conversational, focusing on developing students' interpersonal skills and auditory comprehension. These students have a fantastic opportunity to begin developing an ear for another word language at such a young age. During the meeting, it was suggested that much of the word language curriculum focused on culture and that much of this focus could be effectively migrated to another discipline. This is simply an unfair assessment of the word language program. The word language curriculum focuses on vocabulary, interpersonal speaking, and comprehension with culture as death setting. The curriculum does not primarily teach culture, but rather exposes students to develop a word language through the lens of culture. The skills that the students leave this program with provide them a foundation for success at higher levels of word language, as well as better equipment to engage with a continually growing diverse society. The elementary word language program allows students grades one through four to engage with different cultures in a new language for 90 minutes a week. A proposal to reduce word language exposure, in some cases by up to 66%, would significantly inhibit the student's ability to explore a new word language vocabulary and develop their auditory comprehension. It is not right that a solution to one problem imposes the exact same problem to a thriving program. I absolutely agree with the petitions for increased art exposure and support the exploration of culture through various disciplines within our schools, but I find it hard to reconcile this if it were to come at the cost of the existing and thriving word language program. Finally, I believe that in life, our actions speak louder than our words. If we are so swift to significantly reduce students' exposure to a word language program that at its best, at its very essence heightens and highlights the diversities that make our world the beautiful mosaic it is, how could we as a community be champions of diversity and inclusivity? Our young students need to see us exemplify behaviors that promote discoveries and cultivate curiosities about the differences that make the fabric of society so strong. Simply put, how can we expect our children to value other languages and the diverse cultures that they are comprised of if we ourselves do not value the time spent exploring these languages? Please reconsider this move to reduce students' word language exposure, and I urge you to explore the alternatives that exist to address the lack of exposure these students have with respect to art. Thank you, Marisol Juarez. I'm a Spanish teacher at Guilford Lakes Elementary School. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Bell Stracey, we are inviting Jennifer Yaksall into the meeting.
All right. Hi Jennifer, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't, all right.
No apologies. Go ahead.
So I'm Jennifer Yaksall. I've, as I said in my letter, I've had a lot of experience with the Guilford Music Program. I was, I've basically, I've been been involved with it practically my entire life. My dad started the program, so, and he worked here for 32 years. So this is something I've been familiar with, intimately familiar with for a long time. So I'm very, I understand how it works. And the broad idea here seems to be that, you know, it's all tied to the numbers, that we can, because Adams enrollment is down, it makes sense to cut a music teacher position. And I understand that language arts positions were recently cut, and you're kind of looking at this as the same, the same thing. But it doesn't really work, that that logic just doesn't work for music, and here's why. So for instance, if you take language arts, the seventh grade, let's take the seventh grade language arts students. In one day, there's one bit of information, they all, you know, one like package of information that they all have to learn. And you can take, if your numbers decline, you can take all those classes and you can then combine them into, you know, fewer classes. You can take the teachers who are teaching this, and you can, if you have to eliminate some of those teachers, then the others can pick up the slack, and that works fine. Your program will go on, and the quality will be the same, and it will work. It doesn't work like that for music, because if you take that same one day, there's not one packet of information that these kids are involved with. There's the big orchestra, big chorus, big bands, groups. There are all the smaller groups that support that. And so there's like 10 different packets of information that happen on a day. So if you have declining numbers of students, you can't take those 10 bits and combine them all together. That just, it doesn't work. You also can't, the teachers are not interchangeable like language arts teachers are, and I'll get to that in just a minute. And I know that it's been said repeatedly that when you do this cut, you're going to make sure that the contact time, or you're going to do your best, student contact time will remain the same. But you're taking 1.0 from Adams, so you're taking 30% of Adams' teaching time. So that 30% has to come from somewhere. So if it doesn't come from the contact time with the students, then it comes from all that invisible time that is so important to making that contact time work. It's the preparation, the support, the coordination. And to put together something like a concert, that takes hours and hours of time outside of that contact time, and you're taking away 30% of all of that time. You cannot take that time away without a cost to the program. And also, so then now to kind of go back to the teacher interchangeability, with language arts, if one teacher has to take over another teacher's position and they have some lack of knowledge, they can go to books, they can research, they can study to get the knowledge that will allow them to take over that other position and do a good job. It doesn't work that way with music. A good music teacher comes, it's not from book learning, it is from the hours that you spend practicing, teaching, and in playing. That's what makes you a good teacher. So if music staff are reassigned, they can't just read books to become good at their new position, and it's not a reflection on their dedication or their competence, it's just how, it's the nature of the beast. And music knowledge is not interchangeable. Winds teachers do not make good string teachers and vice versa. And if you don't specialize at least in the family of instrument that you're teaching, like winds or strings, what can happen is you can inadvertently teach patently incorrect techniques, or you can just not see your kids doing patently incorrect things. And what happens is all this solidifies into bad habits that then take those kids years to unlearn. This doesn't happen in the academic setting. So this is another reason that you can't just shuffle music teachers around like you can for academics. And I know that I've heard people say, you know, this cut isn't going to be a big deal, we're just shuffling teachers, teachers. And that makes it sound very benign, but for a music program, it's not at all benign. And our performance music program here in Guilford excels because we've always hired specialists. We can use our teachers interchangeably. I mean, that's true, they can, they can, Chris can go down and teach orchestra, or you know, whoever, they can all be switched around. But that is not how our program got the way it is and achieved its excellence, and it's not how we maintain that.
Jennifer, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you if you would to wrap it up.
Yeah. There's a lot of, thanks so much. There's a lot of assumptions that support this idea of why this works, but I don't think it does, and so I would really ask you to reconsider.
All right, thank you so much. Let, please let me know if, if, if we have people who have more to share at some point, and we have time, we have fewer speakers than we expected, or, or more time tomorrow, just letting people know. We don't like to cut people off, we just really want to make sure everyone has a voice here.
And Dr. Bell Stracey, we are inviting Charles Magby to speak.
All right. Hi Charles, can you hear us? We can't quite see you, or, and it looks like you're still on mute.
I should be unmuted now.
I can hear you, but we can't see you.
We can't see you yet.
I'm not quite sure how to achieve that.
If you go to the bottom left side of your screen, there should be an option to turn on video. You just have to click on the icon.
Okay.
There we go, wonderful, welcome.
Great. Again, I want to speak on the elimination of the 1.0 position at Adams Middle School. To begin, I want to give you a little background of where I'm coming from and why I'm making the comments that I am. I've had a violin shop in Guilford for nearly 40 years, and an office in New York City as well. I have supported the Guilford String Program since the early 1980s, so I'm extremely familiar with it and intimate with it. I've also been a union card member, caring professional musician and cellist my entire adult, entire adult life. I have performed with most of the orchestras in the state and was the principal cellist for Guilford's own Don Trener in the orchestras he contracted for Connecticut for more than 20 years. As such, I've had the opportunity to interact with numerous other high-level professional players, many of whom are also public school educators. The feedback I've had from these individuals as well, from my own customers in the Guilford Instrument Music Program, is that the Guilford Musical Instrument Program is one of the top programs in the state, and it's the envy of everyone who discusses it with me. And I'm sure you're aware of that, but I want to emphasize that. And I'm in a kind of a unique position to hear that because I deal, interact with, with professional players and teachers and, and parents and students from all over the state and all over the region, and I hear the same thing from all of them about our program here in Guilford. I want you to know there's several reasons for that. Guilford has had the foresight to hire teachers to run the elementary and middle school programs who are string specialists and not general music teachers. This is extremely important as the difficulties involved in taking beginning and even middle school students and molding them into ensembles require special training and experience that a general music teacher simply cannot bring to the table. Also, beginning and middle school students are generally unable to tune and properly care for their instruments. Guilford's program is such a success because Jane Postivoy and Chris Jones have an assistant who helps them tune and prepare each instrument for use so that precious class time can actually be used for the students to learn and train as an ensemble. That's a very, very important point. Jane Postivoy and Chris Jones bring a level of intelligence, creativity, and dedication to their job that is simply priceless. Tom Boats brings a level of performance and musical understanding to his position that is seldom found in public education in the programs. He's an incredibly skilled, wonderful performing musician. That's very rare in the public school programs anywhere. Because Guilford students are so well-prepared by the time they reach high school, Mr. Boats is able to concentrate on preparing students to function as ensembles. It's because he's had the support from the elementary and middle schools that he's able to do his job at the level that he does, and he's very appreciative of that. If there's a current decline in enrollment in the program, I think it's probably more due to COVID than, and doubt that work and dedication of these, these professionals have kept the decline from being considerably worse. I don't, I frankly don't understand how they're able to do their job at the level they do. It's a testament to them, for sure. It's critical to the problem that, that the program needs to be continuously supported. Once it is diminished, it may not be possible to ever restore to the current level of quality. These are just a few, few reasons I ask that you reconsider and not implement any cutbacks to Guilford's music program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Freeman, I do, I do just want to take a moment as we wait for the next person to come in, just to clarify, because I think we saw a couple emails as well, that when Dr. Freeman is talking about enrollment, it is unrelated to any COVID impacts that are experienced this year, that, that we haven't seen declines in enrollment for about seven years at Guilford Public Schools that started in, in elementary and have just been working their way up through the school system and thus have hit Adams. And I, again, that's not to counter anybody's comments, I just, I just want that as a clarification, that there have been real COVID impacts in the school district this year, but any enrollment discussion is unrelated to those. Mr. Gom, welcome.
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody. I truly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you in this forum tonight. I come here wearing several hats. I am a Guilford resident, parent of two Guilford Public School students, and a music teacher at Adams Middle School and Guilford High School. Indeed, I am one of the music teachers who would be impacted by the proposed cut to the music department. Specifically, I am the point four in the three point four FTE that you've been hearing about. I want to be absolutely clear that I have no desire to pit music against any of the other initiatives included in this budget. Furthermore, I mean no disrespect to those who have put this proposal together and especially to Dr. Freeman, who I'm proud to call my superintendent. I want to encourage anyone who comes here tonight to speak on behalf of the music department to join me in first recognizing that the good people who put this budget together are faced with a difficult task and are acting in good faith on behalf of our students. Yet, as comfortable as this is for me to say, on the matter of the proposed budget cut to Adams Music Department, I feel compelled to speak out against this decision. My argument can be summed up in two statements. First, the music staffing in our district is more balanced than the numbers you have heard suggest. And second, the timing of this proposed cut on the heels of the pandemic will simply magnify the negative impacts on the music program and its students. There are many more arguments to be made for sure, but I suspect those will be made by others. First, the numbers. When I put myself in Dr. Freeman's shoes, I can understand why the staffing numbers at Adams caught his attention. But what isn't represented in those numbers is that in addition to the two point three certified music teachers at Baldwin, our district also employs two additional music teachers paid as paraprofessionals, one full-time assistant for the Baldwin Band and one part-time assistant for the orchestra. By my count, that means Baldwin has just shy of four full-time music teachers, slightly more than are employed at Adams, not less. These assistants are much more than warm bodies in the room. They fulfill most of the same duties of the certified teachers, such as instructing small groups of students, conducting the full ensembles upwards of a hundred and twenty students in rehearsals and concerts. The teacher who held this assistant band director position for the last six years was in fact a fully certified music teacher. The orchestra assistant in recent years, though not certified, has always been a highly trained musician with significant teaching experience in the area of strings. I can tell you, based on the experience of my two daughters and that they had in the Baldwin program, students don't see these assistants as any less of a music teacher than the certified teachers whom they assist. Choosing not to count the two assistants ignores their impact on the Baldwin program and skews the numbers, especially when comparing them to Adams, which has no such additional staff. As for the comparison with the staffing between Adams and the high school, I can only say it's a different animal. Our students at GHS are much more independent, and class sizes in the realm of fifty to a hundred students with a single teacher simply don't pose the kind of challenges posed by similar-sized classes of beginner students. Simply put, setting the music staff, setting the music staffing levels at Adams or Baldwin based on those at the high school may make sense on a spreadsheet, but it simply doesn't make sense in the classroom. So what about the figures you've heard that Baldwin music teachers service four hundred and fifty students while Adams services three hundred? While even if you accept my argument that the staffing levels at the schools are comparable, these enrollment numbers would seem of their own accord to suggest that a reduction in staffing at Adams is warranted. Again, the numbers don't tell the whole story. For the last six or seven years, the music enrollment numbers have basically been the same, with three hundred to three hundred and fifteen students taking either orchestra choir or band at the same time that non-music students received a study hall, hence the numbers you've heard. This year, however, Adams rolled out a completely new schedule, a schedule that was developed pre-COVID, and I would expect to be the basis of any scheduled post-COVID. In this new schedule, students were not enrolled in performance group, but were instead enrolled in general music. Among other things, this significant change brought Guilford in line with state standards, recommending that all students receive instruction in music through grade eight. Since no additional music staff were hired at Adams last year, the existing music teachers absorbed those students, developing the curriculum for this new class at the same time that they planned for all the other changes brought on by COVID. Bottom line, the music teachers at Adams this year are teaching four hundred and ninety students, not three hundred, four hundred and ninety, a number that's right in line with Baldwin. Because of the nature of the budgeting process, it's too soon to know if the proposed cut would be in the loss of general music after just one year or if this reduced staff would still be expected to service the full school population, thus spreading their time thinner. Either way, the students lose. Now, my second point, timing. The other subject, no other subject area has been affected by COVID as much as the performing arts. Instead of a year filled with the excitement of starting a new instrument or performing with the choir for the first time, our fifth graders' only exposure to music this year has been through a series of weekly video lessons prepared by the music faculty. Baldwin's sixth graders have gone from meeting as a full band every other day for an hour to meeting just once every two weeks for forty-five minutes, once every two weeks. Just think about that. Current Adams students have gone from meeting every day to three out of five days, just one day per week in person, the remainder online. To be clear, all of these were unequivocally necessary sacrifices in the name of keeping our staff, our students, and their families safe. And the decisions by school administrators to make these changes were done with the full support of everyone in the music department. Nevertheless, these are the.
Mr. Gom, I'm gonna ask you if you would just to, if you could to wrap it up a little bit. We're past four minutes, thank you so much.
Will do.
Thank you.
Since we've already touched a little bit on what has been lost in terms of the programming, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about about how, not only, excuse me, this cut comes at a bad time for how comes at a bad time for our students and their social emotional well-being. We know this has been a hard year for students. It's left a profound mark on many. Phys ed, art, music, theater are all areas that allow for a deeper, more personal connection with students, a connection that extends beyond a year. Seniors in my ensembles have known and worked with me for six years. I don't know any other teacher in the district that can say that. That long-term relationship with students has absolutely helped me reach students who are struggling with their social and emotional health due to COVID. I don't claim to be a counselor, a social worker, or a psychologist. Those are people who have high-quality training to help students find their way out of the woods. I'm a music teacher, and in times like these, it's my job to keep students from going into the woods in the first place. I'll just close by saying I understand and recognize the challenges you, the board, face as you determine how to address the needs of our students while remaining responsive to the current fiscal climate. And with the additional context of declining enrollment, I'm sensitive to the delicate balancing act. That's the essence of every school budget. My discipline, music, is just one piece in a large puzzle you were doing your best to assemble. Then again, have you ever pored over a puzzle for days and weeks only to find at the end there's a piece missing? So before you take the next step and pass this on to voters, I implore you to look at the numbers with fresh eyes and recognize that Baldwin and Adams are more balanced than first meets the eye. Before you lock in a cut that reduces the resources we offer our middle school students, I ask you put yourself in the shoes of the students rising from Baldwin to Adams and acknowledge what they have already lost. Finally, as you step back and look at this budget in its totality, and you lean into the idea that this is a values document which represents what this community finds important, and you consider the many letters and comments you receive and are yet to receive, and you take it all in, please notice, there's a piece to the puzzle missing. It's an important piece. That piece is somewhere, and I hope you take the time to find it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dr. Bellis Tracy, we have Amanda Windhurst joining us.
Okay.
Hi, Dr. Bellis Tracy, can you see me?
I, I can, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Walter.
I had you upside down sideways. Good evening. My, my comment and question, I guess, are slightly different from the rest of the group. We're proud parents of an MJS fourth grader. I just wanted to mention, I just wanted to make sure and make sure that the, the board is checking all of its opportunities on the revenue side, particularly when it comes to applications for eligible reimbursement through major disaster, four, five, zero, zero for Connecticut, through the town of Guilford possibly, or as a separate applicant themselves. We have, I would draw your attention to the presidential memorandum that was issued on January twenty-first, the full title of which, it's on the whitehouse.gov site, the full title of which is memorandum to extend federal support to governor's use of the National Guard to respond to COVID-19 and, and to increase reimbursement and other assistance provided to states. I would particularly draw your attention to sections three, four, and five of, of that memorandum. For instance, assistance for eligible schools, childcare facilities, healthcare facilities, non-congregate shelters, domestic violence shelters, transit systems, and other eligible applicants. The town of Guilford may already be applying for this reimbursement, but it may not, but your eligible costs may not have been fully captured at this point. There is, in section four, they review advanced reimbursement. And it is, in section five, they review hundred percent cost share. So through the Connecticut Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, applicants across the state of Connecticut are applying for that type of funding, separate from CARES Act funding. And that's for DR four-five-hundred CT. That's Delta Romeo four-five-zero-zero Charlie Tango Amendment one. And that was, that was declared back in March, but there have been significant revisions to it very, very, very recently. And I just wanted to make sure that all of those options for revenue, some of which could be very, very substantial for PPE and for other eligible COVID-related costs as being explored. Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you very much. I, I will say that our business department, the town's business department has regularly been checking into avenues for reimbursing substantial costs incurred this year. But any help, assistance, further information is really welcome. Wonderful, hi, Teresa, how are you? Welcome. We can't hear you. You're still on mute, is there?
Sorry, yes, I have, I have a toddler in the house, so. I'll try to keep it quick. Um, my name is Teresa Biajrelli. I teach Spanish at Melissa Jones School. And I just wanted to comment on the proposed reduction in world language learning at the elementary level. As I'm sure you know, learning a language is incredibly important to everyone. It makes you a citizen of the world. It helps you understand other cultures, as Dr. Freeman pointed out in the board meeting last week. But it does so much more, and actually not just language learning, but our program itself and the design that our program has does more than that. I did want to speak to how it was originally designed and the concepts that were used in that creation. So when our program was designed, Dr. Keen and those who worked on it with her actually took in elements of other parts of the curriculum, such as social studies and science and even math and reading. For instance, in the third grade, they learn about ocean animals in their regular science class. And then in Spanish class, we also teach them ocean animals in Spanish. And we're teaching them the same material whenever we can in Spanish that they learn in their regular classroom. And the idea behind that is that when you actually learn something in another language, it's recorded in a part of your brain that's separate from the original place where you learned it. And studies have shown, I believe it was Alliance Francais that did a lot of these studies, that students who learn material in two different languages, when they are under stress, will actually remember those things, sometimes from one language and sometimes from the other, because it's actually stored in different places. So they've seen shown a lot of success on tests and stressful sort of situations from people who speak more than one language. And it's believed that it actually has to do with the way your brain is trained when you are learning multiple languages. And the younger you are, when you start learning a language, the more successful you can become at storing information in your brain that way. And that's why I think it's just so vital to keep students learning more and more about language. And of course, I think it's obvious, but culture here is incredibly important. And I feel very special that I get to welcome students who speak Spanish as a first language, and I'm usually the first point of contact for those students coming into our school. And I love being the person to welcome them in. And just teaching students about the rest of the world in such a natural setting where we learn to speak the language and then we learn about all the great things about other countries while we learn about their languages. I just think it's such a wonderful experience, and I would, I would really hate to lose that at the elementary level. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Heidi Smith joining us. Okay, yes, go to the next one. Here she is. I see her coming in now. Heidi, are you there?
I am, sorry, it started to rejoin, almost like it disconnected.
It did, we lost you for, I'm glad we have you back.
Do you have your video, Heidi, or are you able to turn on your video?
Yep, I can put it on, sorry.
No problem, no apologies, wonderful, welcome.
Thank you. I've actually already written an email, and I'm not going to repeat what was in that. However, over the last several days, a couple of things had come to mind that really have to do with equitability and what we teach at, for, at Adams and at Baldwin. Speaking, my child plays orchestra, she's a freshman at the high school. And I will say that it's invaluable, the lessons. Not only are they teaching a class, they're teaching these students how to play their instrument. And although I appreciate, as in any other language arts, math, you can go and learn that. A string teacher is not going to be able, and these were my daughter's words, teach her how to hold her bow, tighten her strings, replace a string, sit properly, if you're a band teacher, to cross over. I think we have to really look at what the pandemic has done with fifth graders not being able to play an instrument. So we're already a year behind, plus a year of what we've been in with the pandemic. And if you can't afford a private teacher, which is really the only way my child has been playing music regularly is because she's had a private teacher, we're going to lose a significant amount for our kids, and our kids have already lost so much. So I think we have to look at the concentration and appreciate that our program is well-versed and successful because we have specialized teaching. And yes, they can probably teach K through twelve or whatever their, whatever it is, it's not going to work for music, as others have, have pointed out. And I think we really need to consider giving back to our kids what they've lost and getting that specialized training, because music is more of a mental health issue for a lot of them, a break in their day. It's a bright spot to go and play music. And I think that that's an important part of music that we really can't lose. And it's invaluable what she's gone to the high school now, because the high school is about performance. It's about those kids having that foundation, and we're going to take it away from them by cutting a position at Adams. So thank you.
Thank you.
You. Dr. Bellis Tracy, we are inviting Barbara Hargraves into the meeting.
There I am. Hi, Dr. Freeman. Hi, Dr. Bellis Tracy, how are you doing?
Good, thank you, how are you?
I'm good. I am here tonight, I wanted to thank Dr. Freeman for the effort that he put forth on the, the proposed education budget. I, I recognize that this is like one of the lowest increases, I, I think, in many recent years. So I do appreciate that as a taxpayer. However, I'm here to ask you all to reconsider the cut in music staffing at Adams. And then actually, I'm going to look at this a little bit differently. I think overall, in the town of, or in the Guilford Public School System, we have twelve, twelve and a half maybe FTEs across all the schools. So I'm, I'm, I'm concerned mostly about losing any one of them. I mean, I think we all agree that the music program is top quality and one of the best in the state. So we're all in the same place there. But I would, and I think we all would also agree this, that that part of the reason that the program is so, so robust But I would, and I think we all would also agree this, that that part of the reason that the program is so, so robust and so rich for our children is because of the support of the Board of Ed, the administration, you, yourself, Dr. Freeman. And, but the heart and soul of this program comes from the teachers. I mean, they devote countless hours and time with our kids to create a great program, to make them better musicians and, and to make them better people. And the thought of losing any one of them and their expertise that they bring to the program is just very, very discouraging to me and to my kids. I have two daughters in the music program and, you know, we were talking about this. And I just question, with all that our students have lost, I mean, that all of us have lost over the past year with the pandemic. But our music students in particular, they've lost performing. They've lost practicing their instruments with their peers in their respective performing groups. And I wonder if instead of decreasing, and I recognize, Dr. Freeman, that cutting a position, cutting one FTE is not going to cut the teacher student ratio and it, and it, on paper, it looks like it makes sense because enrollment is down. I just question if maybe that's not what the students need. I think about my kids as they moved from Baldwin to Adams and the level that they were at, and not just them, their peers. And I wonder about where the students that start at Adams in the fall, where are they going to be? They're not going to be at the same musical ability or level that is accustomed to at Adams, and they're going to need more, they're going to need more time, they're going to need more practice time. I'm not necessarily, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we change the schedule at Adams to increase music into the day, although that would be nice. But I, I wonder if we were to keep the 1.0 FTE at that school, if that, that individual could be used for our students who are coming in and perhaps not playing in as large groups, but like making the groups smaller and making the time better quality, so there's more one-on-one, or the student-teacher ratio would be, is it lessened? It would be lessened. But I also think about the students at Baldwin, because the fifth graders didn't get a chance to play instruments at all this year. So next year, provided that all the COVID precautions and protocols are lessened, you're going to have two grades of kids that are learning new instruments. And I am sure that the band teacher and the orchestra teacher there, although they have these full-time or one and a half, I, I miss the numbers that Mr. Gom said, assistants, I wonder if they would need additional help to bring these kids up to speed. And I just wonder if, if cutting staff out of the music program for the town overall is really what's necessary at this point. Financially, I understand that. It's a tough year for a budget. And I am just asking that you, you reconsider that cut and, and maybe look elsewhere for it. Someone touched on this. My kids, when they went, they were in Baldwin and they moved to Adams and then Adams, I have one up at the high school. The one thing that was always consistent was their band group and their orchestra group. And they knew, okay, I'm going to have Mrs. Postavoy next year too. At Adams, my daughter went with Ms. Oakley and Mr. Gom, and then she moved up to the high school. That connection was so crucial to her, to both my girls' development and to their feeling connected within the community. And I would hate to see that lack of consistency and lack of continuity across the program. So I'm just asking that you guys reconsider.
All right. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Freeman. Thank you. Christine should be joining us.
Hi.
Thank you, Christine. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks again for this wonderful forum to allow us to voice our opinion. My name is Christine Latayad. I have two children at Guilford Public School and one at Calvin Leet. I am also currently PTO co-president of Leet. However, this evening, I am speaking to you strictly as a parent. Two other members of our PTO board will be speaking about the support that we've garnered from Leet parents for the increase in art instruction and the library immediate position at the elementary school level. One already has, Audrey Barr, earlier. Speaking as a parent, I would like to say that I would like to express my support in general for the 2021, 2022 education budget. However, I would also ask if we can go back to the drawing board when it comes to the cut in music at Adams. I have to say that music has been such an important part of our two, our boys at the high school. They've been involved with the music program since Baldwin, since the fifth grade. And it's been such an important part of their school experience. I also want to say, as Mr. Gom said, by the way, Mr. Gom, thank you for all that you said. And I support your position. On the matter, the, the therapeutic value, I think, of music is one that we shouldn't underestimate. And of course, budgets are always about making difficult decisions, especially in current times. However, I, if we can go back to the drawing board and see if there's anything else that we can do, I would be greatly appreciative. My family as well, as our children have gotten quite a bit out, I think their development, their education would not have been the same without the incredible music program. And we know many families from surrounding towns as our children play or involve in many extracurricular activities that involve kids on the shoreline. And the music program, as you all know, I'm not saying anything new, is always touted. Many families have said, if I knew what I know now about music, I would have bought, I would have purchased in Guilford and not XYZ town. And I don't want to point any town out. I also would like to say that I appreciate Dr. Freeman and express my support for the position of Equity Liaison. And I understand that starting this position, especially in the current environment, it makes sense to start as part-time. However, I hope that Guilford Public Schools will eventually dedicate more resources to such a position as events in recent years in our country demonstrate the dire need for more resources dedicated to ensuring equity and inclusion in our schools. And that's basically it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
You. So we are inviting Susan Rollins into the meeting.
Surprise, I'm not Susan Rollins.
Welcome.
If I am, I feel sorry for her. I'm married to Susan Rollins. I'm just using her computer. This is Doug Rollins. And I'm, I'm coming in on support of keeping the music position. Gosh, I'm so inspired by what everybody said already. First of all, let me thank you guys for what you do on the board. It's a tremendously difficult task. You do it with such intelligence and caring and hard work, and we really, really do appreciate it. So as I think somebody said before, please don't take this as any sign of disrespect or other than just more for the love of the music that I'll just summarize what I've heard tonight rather than add anymore. Leslie came on and said, clearly, music has been decimated by this pandemic, especially at Baldwin and Adams. Nicole eloquently spoke as to how essential music is for the mind and the soul for these kids. Jennifer, with her great background in education, talked about how it's really not as easy to quantify music education as other forms of education. So true. Charles, our ultimate performer, pointed out that music clearly is a crown jewel of this, of this education program here in Guilford. Everybody knows that, preaching to the choir. Heidi came on to talk about equity. I'll add a little bit on that. We're concerned that there are kids who have more means to get more private lessons and some who don't. And for those fifth graders who didn't get to play an instrument this year, it, they're, they might fall off, off the edge. And I've said to many people, I love this music program, not just because of the individual performances, but because of that everybody's so good. It's just amazing. And I feel like we could lose those less privileged kids, and that's just unfair. They need to be, have that same amount of education. Barb talked about the incoming seventh and eighth graders need more, not less. I can't agree more. They, so much has been taken away from them. We need more individual instruction. We know a student who's a board member's kid who was involved in mentoring. And this kid said, wow, I can see these 10-year-olds, you know, without some extra help are just going to be lost. So again, more, not less. Mark, I can't say enough about his presentation. Yeah, it really is, when you look at the numbers, there's different ways to look at numbers. We all know being numbers people and having to answer on both the financial and the educational part of this document. You guys know that numbers can work for and against us. And if you look at the numbers in a different way, you can perhaps see that Baldwin and Adams do match up in terms of the amount of teaching help they get, not just qualified licensed teachers, but assistants. Adams music students don't, what did my word add? Oh, Adams, the Adams decline in enrollment at Adams doesn't necessarily follow with the decline in Adams music enrollment. There's a lot of kids there that need, that need music instruction. So I, I can't say enough about all the great people who are supporting this. Did, can you tell us how many letters you've received so far on this, on just music? Dr. Bell Stracey?
Um, this is a completely unsatisfactory answer, a lot. And I say that honestly, because my full-time job prevented me from, from reading any of the ones that were received today. Please know that, that I will certainly be reading, as I said, and forwarding those to board members, because some of them, again, were directed just to me.
More reason to, to thank and respect you guys for what you do. This isn't your, your only job. But anyway, I do say we, the Guilford music-supporting parents really do have a passion for these kids. You know how great these kids are. You know the effects that music has on their general education, their cognitive skills, their executive functioning. You know all that. You know how important it is. We really implore you to find another way to not lose this position, especially this year. It is a real dagger for these kids to, to leave this year with so little exposure to music and then go into the next year with one less chance to take that instrument up, to become a part of a great group of kids. Anyway, thank you for your time. And also, do you, are you hearing about this petition? Do you, you've been, be kept apprised of what's going on with the petition? Because there is.
Yes, the, 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 we were made aware in an email that there is a petition. I will note that, that only the petition creator can see who signed it. But, but we are aware that one has circulated. Thank you.
Thank you. And we, we do think it's upwards of seventeen or eighteen hundred people. So we, we think there's a lot of support for this, and I guess you know that too. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are inviting Bobby Hague to join the meeting.
Hello.
Hi, Bobby, welcome.
My apologies, I'm on an old laptop here.
That's okay. No problem.
I am, I'm a current senior at, at the high school, and I'd like to speak as other people have in, I, I don't want the music, music position at Adams to be removed. And a lot of what I plan to say has already been said by other people. So I'll just try to provide my perspective as a, as a recent student at Adams. And I mean, I, I want to echo everything that Mr. Gom said about us understanding all the problems that the district has been having economically and everything. And that we, we really appreciate everyone's effort on, on the budget. And I don't want, I mean, any disrespect to anyone, but really the, the three teachers at Adams, as other people have said, are so exceptional at teaching what they teach. I was, I was in the band program, a student, Mrs. Oakley, and she was, she, she was an exceptional band teacher and Mr. Jones, exceptional orchestra teacher, and Mrs. Johnson, exceptional chorus teacher. And they, there is really no interchangeability between those departments among the three of them. And a perfect example of this happens in our, in our district just last year, because, well, one of the teachers at the high school, Mr. Boats, had to have surgery. And as a result, was out, out of school for a few weeks. And most of what Mr. Boats does at the high school, Mr. Jones from Adams is very qualified to teach, because Mr. Boats does two orchestras and music theory classes and the jazz ensemble. So Mr. Jones was mostly an ideal candidate for, to, to fill in during that time, because Mr. Jones is a string player. He was great at conducting the orchestras and music theory classes right up his alley as well. But jazz ensemble, which I was in, is not his area of expertise, and he'd be the first one to tell you that. And he did tell us that. And as, as a result, during that time when he was filling in for Mr. Boats, I mean, we, we all liked Mr. Jones. There's nothing not to like about Mr. Jones. And he definitely put forth a really respectable effort, but we just did not learn that much, because that's, that's not what he knows. He told us he had very little jazz knowledge and experience. So we were mostly on our own during that time. And so I know that if I had been taught by Mr. Jones for two years in Adams, instead of Mrs. Oakley, even though I'd like Mr. Jones, I wouldn't be half the musician I am now as, and trumpet player if he had been my teacher instead of Mrs. Oakley. So when, when Mr. Jones was at the high school, I mean, as, as, as has been said, the, the contact time wasn't decreased, and it was still jazz band. It was still an hour of jazz band every day, but it was not nearly the same experience for any of us. And, and finally, when, when I was in middle school, I, I think, as Mr. Gom sort of mentioned earlier, Mrs. Oakley, as my band teacher, was, I, I relied on her for more than the entire guidance department combined. And I know that goes a lot for my friends as well. So it's, it's more complex than just, in my opinion, it's more complex than just number of students, number of teachers. And, and finally, this, this doesn't affect me anymore, because, I mean, I'm about to graduate. I don't have any students in Adams, no kids yet. So I just, my, my musical experience in Adams was so overwhelmingly positive and transformative and beneficial to me. As, as I said in my email to Dr. Bell Stracey on Friday, but it was, it was so, so, so important for me. And I want every student that goes through Adams to have the same opportunity that I did. And removing one of the three teachers does not help that at all. It goes in the opposite direction. So thank you very much for your time. And if, if you can, please give Mr. Gom some more time at the end. I think we don't like to do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bobby. Dr. Bell Stracey, we have Christine Ford.
Hi, Christine, welcome.
Hi, sorry, I didn't, I think I lost my connection just as it was my turn. Apologies. And hi, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak tonight. And thank you, Dr. Freeman and Dr. Crystal and the board for just the incredible amount of thoughtfulness that went into this and every budget proposal. Listening to everyone speak tonight, it just, this is tough. So my, my hat is off to all of you. I just wanted to speak briefly tonight in support of the equity and social justice proposals that are involved in the budget, the residency program and the Equity Liaison. I feel that these programs will help move us forward and are a creative solution with so many pressures on the budget to, to move Guilford into the, where it needs to be. However, as thoughtful and creative and well-meaning as these programs are, I would ask Dr. Freeman and the However, as thoughtful and creative and well-meaning as these programs are, I would ask Dr. Freeman and the board to consider, consider how they can go even further. These programs increase representation and support for our students of color. But I believe they will have an equally, if not even more important impact on the ninety-three percent of our students in town that are white. There's a significant amount of research that shows that diverse culturally aware classrooms provide real benefits to all students, including and especially white students who don't have any of that diversity. In the short term, these learning environments have demonstrated cognitive, social and emotional benefits through many studies. And in the long term, it better prepares our kids for an increasingly diverse world. And maybe more importantly, their role and responsibilities in that new world. The relevance of this in today's environment, especially for white people cannot be, cannot be overstated. And considering that at a national level, white students now make up less than fifty percent of K through twelve populations, it suggests that Guilford students are at a severe disadvantage without counteraction. I'm so thankful to Dr. Freeman and Dr. Crystal for their work already in this vein. And so supportive of it. And ask them to continue to do that work as aggressively as possible. And I also want to thank and acknowledge all of the teachers across our district who have been supporting this work, you know, for years and taken on a lot of it themselves as well. And urge the board and the community at large to support the residency program and equity liaison here in the, in the current proposal. But also consider how these programs and specifically the liaison position and its support of curriculum optimization could be expanded. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I really appreciate everything you all are doing.
Thank you.
And Dr. Bell Stracey, we have Cara Coral, and she appears to be the last person in the queue to speak tonight.
Okay. Hello Kara. Welcome.
Hi, thank you guys so much. I know how hard this is and I know how much ti- I can't imagine how much time that it has taken. And as someone who normally has spoken on behalf of wanting more art at our schools, I find myself on the other end of things with this proposed budget. Usually as somebody who grew up doing music and art, I'm always wanting more art for my children. But I am not in support of more art at the cost of our world language. In such a diverse world, I feel it's really necessary for my children to learn a language. As someone who spent most of their time doing the arts and attending a school that didn't offer half of what Guilford has offered, I was really excited for my children to start learning a language at such a young age. I don't think that thirty minutes, even sixty minutes a week is enough for them to really work and learn. I've been really impressed with our Spanish program at AW Cox pre-COVID. And I'm really saddened to see that this program could be cut. There's something, it's something that I personally don't think that as a family we can do at home. We spend lots of time doing arts and even through COVID, we found ways to be artistic. But one area that I've seen struggle through COVID for my kids is world language. And so I just really hope that, I just don't think the solution is to give more art, but then we have less world language. I just don't think that that's equitable either. And I just wonder if there's a better solution that can be found if we relook at things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bell Stracey, we do have a few more speakers who would like to join us. Jackson, Jackson Howard would be next.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, Jackson, welcome.
Hi. Um, second. All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Jackson Howard. And I'm a freshman at the Guilford High School and have participated in Guilford's music program for almost four years. I've come here to say that I believe cutting a music teaching position at Adams Middle School is highly unacceptable. Recently, a petition has been filed on change.org and one thousand seven hundred people have signed because they believe that education and music is important and are greatly alarmed at what the Board of Education proposes in their planned budget. I'm not here to disrespect any member of the board and appreciate the work they do. I believe that cutting position for the music department this year especially will create, will greatly impact the fantastic music program Guilford maintains. Due to the pandemic and all of the safety precautions taken to make sure every student has the opportunity to safely gain an education, the students that perform an instrument have been greatly affected. At Baltimore Middle School, the current fifth graders have not participated in any music at all. And the sixth graders have had around one-sixth of the same training as previous years. I myself have a younger brother in the sixth grade, who in a normal year would have participated in around four concerts by now and have been receiving regular instruction multiple days a week. However, these students have not been able to receive the same amount of instruction or performance opportunities as previous years and have missed out on so many opportunities. The choir and band at Baldwin have barely been able to practice due to the fact that their activities do present a higher risk of potentially spreading the virus. The orchestra has also been poorly affected by the safety precautions. And all groups have been offset by the shutting down of schools and quarantining that is a necessity at this time. These students have also missed out on the opportunity to work with older students from the high school, which myself and many other classmates found a large inspiration to continue our music education. Additionally, while you have stated that at Adams, each specialty class is staffed by two teachers, the music program is unique as each teacher is specializing in a particular subject of music. And as Yoxla stated, these teachers are not interchangeable. With this in mind, I believe that the music department at Adams will have an incredibly difficult task ahead as they attempt to get these students up to the skill level that previous classes have had. Cutting a position would only make things worse and would further desecrate the music program Guilford has proudly provided for years. Finally, at the last Board of Education meeting, Dr. Freeman, you said that you thought it was important for the budget to have a bright spots because of its timing and that it was important to support students' social and emotional growth and have something to be enthusiastic about. While you were talking about incorporating Guilford Swim Team, those same emotions, that same groove and the enthusiasm you're talking about applied to the music classes at all of our schools. Removing a teacher at Adams won't only take away from the wonderful program we have, but would add a very dark spot to the budget that would only serve the worst in many students already dark year. I understand that creating a budget is very difficult and that it is hard to appease both the citizens involved with the schools and those who are not. But I believe that removing the teaching position will be a decision the board will regret. Thank you for your time and I appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you.
Jackson? Dr. Bell Stracey, we have Trini Ahmed.
Hi Trini, can you hear us?
Oh yes, I can hear you. Sorry, it was doing the rejoining thing.
Okay. Wonderful, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. I'm sorry, I know this has been a long meeting. I don't, I'll keep this really short. We heard earlier from Spanish teachers at the elementary schools about the, all the thought that was put into designing the curriculum. And it was really nice to hear. I just wanted to chime in as a parent. Our experience with the Spanish program in the elementary schools, we moved to Guilford a year ago. My son joined in second grade from a private school and we were really shocked to see that he was struggling in Spanish. So the program is really strong. He had been taking Spanish at the other school as well, but he came home, you know, complaining that it was hard and he wasn't able to follow and the teacher only spoke in Spanish. And all of that was music to our ears. The program here is excellent. And I would really hate to see any cuts to that in first grade. And so this is the first year of Spanish and he's doing great and just we're very excited about it. So just wanted to throw in my two cents. We really have appreciated the Spanish program here, would, would hate to see that suffer at all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You. And Dr. Bell Stracey, we have Nate Jacobson. And at this time, he appears to be the last person in the queue.
Okay. Hi Nate, welcome.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yeah, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
I apologize in the delay. It seems like that's happening with a couple of people.
I'm, I'm so sorry Nate, we're having a little, we're having a little trouble hearing you. It's, it sounds a little muffled.
Is this any better?
Not particularly, unfortunately.
Alrighty.
Oh, that, that sounded good.
That sounded better?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna go off, off track a little bit here. Most of you have known, but I have emailed most of you previously on a lot of swim equity issues when I was made aware that my knowledge and information from Mr. Gom, every other program at the high school is supported in Guilford, that swim team were, were not. It seems that this budget is, is responsive to that. But at the, at the same time, a lack of an assistant coach stipend for the swim team appears to me to be a little shock. And was Mr. Jarvis able to do the research related to assistant coach data? On what other sports have assistant coaches and how many?
Um, I, I, I don't know. We can certainly check in with Mr. Jarvis.
Possibly Mr. Freeman knows you, you see it on those emails.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you. The connection's a little bit bad. Could you ask a question again?
Sure. Possibly Dr. Freeman knows if Mr. Jarvis was able to do that research.
I know that Mr. Jarvis is looking into that. We can certainly respond to that Monday night when the board goes into deliberation.
Um, I kind of feel it's depressing for, for the public when, I guess I'm putting it out there pretty blatantly that I strongly suspect that every other sport, yeah, at least ninety-five percent of them are financially supported and then assisting coach stipend. We don't, we can't say that decisively without that data. But that's baffling to me in a budget that's emphasizing equality that your proposed budget wouldn't include assistant coach stipend.
So, um, again Nate, it's a little hard to hear you. It sounds like you are asking us to consider funding for the swim team. Mr. Jarvis, if we can get, find out the information from Mr. Jarvis about support for assistant coaches. I do know as a board, we, we do on, on a, a regular basis, end up actually getting letters from various booster clubs acknowledging support for assistant coaches in various teams. So we certainly know that, that there are a number of teams at Guilford for whom assistant coaches are supported by booster clubs. But that doesn't answer your question. And when we have that information, as Dr. Freeman mentioned, we can talk about it next Monday. Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can now.
If you can find the data specifically on assistant coaches that are board-supported, the ones that choose to make an additional assistant coaching is not what, what I'm interested in. I'm interested in the, in the board-funded ones.
Well, again, we will try to get that information and, and then that's something that we can discuss next Monday, for sure.
I can have that information.
Okay, perhaps Mrs. Trudeau or Mr. Freeman can also shed some light. The coach stipend, when you look into the budget details, is increasing by three point eight six percent when the contractual obligation is one point two percent. Am I correct in that there's two assistant or additional stipends in there that have, have not been better disclosed?
Again, I, I, we are happy to, to get information on the assistant coaches, whatever Mr. Jarvis has available to us to consider next weekend. But it, it sounds like what you're asking us is to look at that because you're concerned that, that it is not covered for the swim team. Is that accurate?
Um, I'm just curious, when I look at the numbers, why it's a three point eight six percent increase when the contractual obligation is one point two percent? I'm, I'm wondering if there are additional coaching stipends there that have not been publicized.
Again, we can certainly look into that and, and then that's something that we can address at our board meeting next Monday, for sure.
I'd be happy to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have one, one other comment that I'd, that I'd like to make, please. I want to make the board aware that we've, the board has, has discussed at length the financial costs of the pay-per-play sports. And I don't think myself or the public would, would expect the board to cover those thoughts. I think it was very responsible of Dr. Hirsch that asked what that price tag was. I just want to make folks aware that if an assistant coach stipend for swimming isn't supported, that will likely increase the pay, pay-per, pay-per-play cost of each swimmer.
All right, thank you. We will, we will certainly keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bell Stracey, at this time, we see nobody left in the queue looking to speak.
Um, I, I, I did end up having to ask one or two people to, to close their comments before they were finished in order to allow everyone to speak. If there is someone whom I, I did need to, to rush, I, I would welcome them back. I think there are one or two people is, is, do either one of those people want to have a little more time?
I see nothing coming into the queue. I, I do believe that I see a new request. If you could please enter your address in with your request, we'll be happy to invite you to speak. Dr. Bell Stracey, I believe we have Golden Sewell. I hope I'm pronouncing the name correctly.
Hi, can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for everything so far. So I haven't had a chance to review the whole budget. But I did want to voice my support for the equity, diversity and inclusion position. I think it's really important for all of our kids to be exposed to more culture and diversity. I also support the residency program. So that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I am not seeing anybody else in the queue waiting to speak.
Seems like there's a Jeffrey Wachance at nine twenty-one is asking to speak. His name comes just after.
Yeah, I do see that, Dr. Hirsch. Thank you. So we can invite Jeffrey and Jeffrey would just ask you to please start your comments by stating your Guilford address, please. Thank you, Dr. Hirsch. I missed that one.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Jeffrey, does your video work? Can you?
Yes, I can turn it, yep, sure.
Wonderful. Thanks so much, welcome.
Hi, welcome. Do you need my address? You said something about needing my address.
Yes, please.
Four fifty North Madison Road in Guilford, Connecticut.
Wonderful, thanks so much. Go ahead.
Look, I just wanted to take a brief minute. I know that it's been a long meeting for everybody, but I wanted to just mention about the Guilford High School swim team. My daughter's been a member of that team for the past few years. And as a parent, I've, I felt a little bit discouraged with the amount of support the team has gotten. And I know that recently we have added, you know, the transportation in the budget. But I just seen that the team has really grown over the last three years. My daughters, when she started there, the team was a losing team. They didn't win anything. They were very discouraged, worked really hard to try to, you know, get through the season, a, a losing season. And then last year, as you know, they were the, the Division Two champions. And I just see, see a real, you know, not equitable expression across all of the sporting teams. This team, you know, I've, I've had three kids in the, in the school system, never had any complaints, but just watching the team, I really feel like, as a parent, the, the onus has really been on us to as a parent, the the onus has really been on us to 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 get these kids, you know, the the uniforms, transportation, basically, you know, all aspects of it. I know that's changing. But I do think that to support the team, they really do need an assistant coach. You have twenty, you know, twenty, twenty-five girls. One person watching all of them, they're not really getting the support they need to really grow. And I think having that assistant coach position will really help them to move forward. I mean, you could see in the short period that they've been, you know, my daughter's been involved, the the growth has been tremendous. And I I think they really are a strong team, and they can get stronger. But for new people coming in, I would imagine, you know, for me, it was kind of a shock, the amount of money I've had to put out to keep my my daughter in this program. And I understand there's always going to be a cost with any sport. But I just really feel like this one is just not treated at the same level of respect that some of the other sports teams get in Guilford. It's kind of, I kind of feel like it's a forgotten sport. And that may just be my perception, you know, as a parent, you know, sitting and watching, you know, I don't feel like there's been as much fanfare as some of the other sports teams in the in the school system. You know, both support, you know, emotionally, but also financially. So I'd just like to see that, you know, that budget expansion of the assistant coast position so the team can continue to grow and continue to, you know, get those championships. I didn't have anything scripted, so I'm sorry if I'm a little, you know, disjointed, but I've been sitting and listening, and I just kind of feel like, you know, I never say anything. I've been, you know, my my daughter had graduated school ten years ago. I got two kids in the school system now. I like most everything about it, but this was really discouraging to me, and I just felt like I needed to speak up. So if we could, it's not a lot of money. If we could just get that team and really give them the support, like a football team or a soccer team or any other team we would get, I just don't think they're getting it right now. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Again, Dr. Balistrace, the queue seems to be complete at this time.
Alrighty. Well, I want to thank everyone who who came tonight, who joined us on Zoom and and shared their thoughts and their comments. We have heard all of you and and welcome anyone who wants to join us tomorrow night, again, Tuesday night, the twenty-sixth, starting at seven thirty. We will provide another opportunity to listen to people's comments and and provide us with input and feedback as we consider the budget. And then, as you've heard me reference a couple of times, we will be meeting next Monday as a board at seven thirty, I think at seven thirty, I hope I've said that correctly, to to discuss, discuss the budget in detail. All right. Again, thank you everyone for joining us. Thank you to my colleagues. I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting for this evening. Mr. Sands, I see again.
Second.
Mrs. Sullivan, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you, everyone. Good night, and we welcome anyone who joins us tomorrow night.